Alright, can everyone hear me okay? Okay, good sign. We're having a little bit of tech difficulties behind the scenes. Hi, everybody. Is everybody in? Uh, let's see, Dave Prestizo, any word?
I have not heard anything from Council Prestizo.
Let me go ahead and send him a quick text. Um, sometimes these 5:30s are hard for him to make. There he is. Perfect timing, Council Prestizo.
Yeah, sorry, Zoom decided to do an update.
Yeah, and I think it was just slow to get in in general because I came in just before you, so. Um, okay, is this the whole gang, Jordan? Alrighty, so let's just go ahead and get started then. We'll call the study session of August 3rd, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Council Clark.
Here.
Council Penemras.
Here.
Council Greider.
Here.
Council Prestizo.
Here.
Council Byers.
Here.
Councilor Parry Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Harris Flut.
Here.
Mayor Yelkorum.
Uh, so I'll go ahead and hand it over to staff.
Perfect. Welcome, everyone. We are here for our study session this evening. And so just so the folks in the audience know, we're doing about an hour-long study session before our regular meeting at 6:45 PM. And at this study session, we have Maeve Hogan from Rogue Climate to lead us and a team that she's been working with us in the city about energy resiliency projects. And these, you know, brilliant minds can speak better for themselves, so I'm going to hand the mic over to Maeve to introduce the full team.
Sure. Before we get started, Maeve, uh, I think maybe just for the audience that we do have, just in case they're really trying to make the regular meeting, just to let everybody know what time the regular meeting starts, Jordan, go ahead and.
Yeah, it'll be this exact same link at 6:45 PM.
So if you're here for the regular council meeting tonight, it starts at 6:45. Counselor Penemras?
Yeah, um, maybe I missed it, but did we skip over the meeting accessibility?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. I didn't have, I didn't see a study session agenda, so. Yeah, at this time, we'll ask Hector to do item number two, uh, medium, meeting accessibility. Hector?
Hey, this is a question for the public. If there are any attendees, I need this meeting translated into Spanish. We'd like for them to raise their hand icon now. Es una pregunta para el público. Si alguien necesita esta reunión interpretada en español, por favor, hace su mano hoy y no watch the attendees there.
Great, and I do see Salinas Garcia raising her hand. Is this for translation? Okay, alright. Uh, alrighty, back to you, Jordan.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Without further ado, Maeve, I'll invite you up to the podium.
Cool. Thank you, everyone. So I'm going to ask Adrian to share her screens. We have some slides prepared for you all today. So once we get those up, we can start. Awesome. Alright, here we go. So first of all, I just want to thank you all for letting us come today. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Maeve Hogan and I work with Rogue Climate as an energy resilience organizer. So we've been lucky enough to be accepted to a technical assistance program called Energy Storage for Social Equity. Shorter name is ES4SE. It's a little bit of a mouthful, but it's an awesome program. We've gotten the opportunity to get together a bunch of great local folks, including some who are in the room today, and work with Pacific Northwest National Laboratory on bringing more renewable energy infrastructure and battery storage into talent. So we're going to be talking about that today. I'm really hoping we can be done by like 6:15, 6:20 at the latest to be able to give you all a little bit of a break before the final meeting tonight. So Adrian, can you go to the next slide? Awesome. Okay, so I'm going to start off today by giving a little bit of an introduction with the intention we're using this program for, what it's all about. And then I'm going to pass it off to the PNNL folks to talk a little bit more about the technical specifics and get into the conversation that we want to have with you all today about the project design and any concerns and goals that you all have. So we can go to the next slide and I can give a quick little shout out to the local team.
Uh, Maeve, can you hear me?
Yes.
What's up? Um, do you mind if I read our disclosure statement first before we get into the presentation? Okay, this is kind of a technicality, just so. I'll just read the statement for, for our research team. So we, Drew and I are here. We are researchers from Pacific Northwest National Laboratory. And we're working on the Energy Storage for Social Equity Technical Assistance Program. It's a goal of this program to design a battery storage system that delivers benefits to people in your community who are underserved and overburdened by the current energy system. Today, we're sharing information about the ES4SE program. The research team will not record this meeting, but we may take notes to capture key thoughts. Comments will not be attributed to an individual. The research team will not ask any questions about you, your experiences, or your community. So this statement is specific to the Pacific Northwest National Laboratory team attending today. Thank you, and I'll go to the next slide for you, Maeve.
Oh, thanks, Adrian. Uh, yeah, Jordan.
You asked. Hello. Thanks so much for sharing that, though I do just want to let folks know, particularly audience members, that while um, that research team does not do any recordings, we are recording this video since this is a public meeting, so we will have record of this.
Cool. Okay, great. So this project on the local side has been a collaboration between my team at Rogue Climate, Solarized Rogue, and the City of Talent. So we've had an awesome team today whose technical experience ranges from disaster resilience to technical solar energy to more of the city planning side as well. And so we've been able to work with this amazing team, and I'm really honored that a bunch of us are here today in order to have this conversation. And now I'm going to let the people from PNNL, who you already kind of heard from, introduce themselves quickly before we get down to serious business.
So maybe we'll go out of order here really quick, just because of who is present. My name is Adrian Rackley. I'm an economist and I'm working on the equity and workforce task. I'll also introduce our group lead, Laura Aston. She is a project manager at PNNL and a team lead. She was not able to join us today because she's visiting another ES4SE community.
Thanks, Adrian. Hi, everyone. Drew Badogger was also with, of course, with Pacific Northwest National Lab. I'm leading some of the technical work for our team on this project and working with my colleagues, Jeremy Twitchell, who's listed here, and then supported by Jessica Kirby, Diane Baldwin, Christine Holland, Jay Barlow, Molly Hall, and Devin Powell. But for today, I think, I think just Adrian and I will be on, so looking forward to sharing our work and, and yeah, back to you, Adrian.
Okay, yeah, thanks so much for having us. We're very excited to be here. Alright, back to you, Maeve.
Sweet. Um, alrighty, so I'm actually, on top of being a member of Rogue Climate staff, I'm actually an AmeriCorps member with the Resource Assistance for Rural Environments, and that name might sound familiar because there have been another, there have been previous rares before me in talent, including Michael Hoak, who used to be an energy manager in talent. And so when I was hired in September, one of my jobs was to look at the talent clean energy plan, look at the progress of it, any goals, any opportunities that were kind of arising during the recovery process. So just quick recap, the primary goals of the Clean Energy Plan are: One, to reduce energy consumption overall from 2015 levels. Two, reach 100% renewable energy resources by 2030. Three, acquire renewable energy sources and storage options for the residents of talent. Keep dollars spent and dollars saved on energy local. And number five, encourage lower emission transportation options. So I came across this opportunity with PNNL when I was researching localized resilience projects and the kinds of values that this program is really encompasses and the intention behind it was something that I thought would be perfect for the City of Talent. And since we're a community who, where interest and support for a just energy transition is really high. And so this opportunity for technical assistance provides the City of Talent with a great opportunity to further its long and short-term goals around clean energy. And we believe that it will ultimately make talent a more affordable, safe, and resilient place to live. We can go to the next slide. Great. So in terms of project status, we've been working with PNNL since about April was when we really started, and we've worked with them to identify potential locations around talent that we think would be great locations for solar energy and battery storage. You'll hear more about that today from Drew and Adrian. And so with the help of our local team, we've really been prioritizing the values of resilience, clean energy, and affordability in the project design. So as the PNNL team will also later describe, this technical assistance is actually designed to help us create both that project design and also identify the funding sources that come afterwards. So we're not creating this really great project design that's going to exist in a bubble and never get done. We're really thinking about what makes that kind of concrete project really fundable and really attractive for funding, and how can we identify those funding sources and prepare for that next step that comes afterwards as well. So with that in mind, we believe that financial support for a project like this will be relatively straightforward to find. And in my rare term until July of 2023, one of my projects will be helping to find and secure funding funding opportunities for any project that the City of Talent does decide to move forward with. So there are three main funding sources that I'll just kind of mention quickly that we've kind of been keeping in the back of our minds because we think that they would be great candidates for our kind of project. So the first is the Oregon Department of Energy Community Renewable Energy Program, a little bit of a mouthful. But this funding opportunity came out of the Clean Energy Bills that were passed in 2021 that members of Rogue Climate actually helped to pass. So we're really familiar with that funding opportunity, the way it was structured, and we're really keeping in mind the values that that funding is really dedicating towards so that we can create a project that would be a perfect candidate for it. And the next is, one of the great pieces of being part of this ES4SE program is that we actually are a candidate along with the rest of our cohort, which is about a group of like 20 communities. And we are a candidate to work with Sandia National Laboratory for that next step, which is the funding and the construction phase. So just by being a part of this cohort, we are eligible to get chosen for that next step with another national lab, which is great in and of itself. This is a really competitive process because obviously everyone has really great ideas. But we do believe that with the help of city council, Rogue Climate, Solarized Rogue, all of our amazing community partners, we can really put together a project that we can demonstrate success, lots of community like attention and the impact it can have on the community to really make a difference and prove that this kind of project would be a great thing to accept for that next step. And then lastly, I'll just mention the federal infrastructure bill. It's kind of, the details aren't completely fleshed out yet, but it is intending to create specific buckets of funding dedicated specifically to resilience projects, which we know that this project would be a perfect candidate for. So that's just a general overview from me, and now I'm going to pass it off to the PNNL folks to get more into the more interesting details.
Thanks, Maeve. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I'm here. Thanks, Maeve. So before, I think before we get into some of the more specifics of what we're doing with, with Rogue and in talent, I just want to do a high, a high overview, a high level overview of the Energy Storage for Social Equity Program. So the goal is to support disadvantaged communities affected by unreliable and expensive energy systems. Through the program, eligible communities will have access to direct, non-financial technical assistance and potential support for new energy storage project development and deployment. So the project itself, or the program I should say, is funded from the, through the Office of Electricity Energy Storage Program run by Dr. Emre Şük. And it's kind of a brainchild of one of our colleagues. As, you know, recognizing some of the historical nature of some of the Department of Energy's work in the past has been very sort of energy technology targeted and really quite focused on sort of those, you know, cutting-edge technologies, which is, which is great. But when interacting with communities, sometimes those projects, new technologies would get put in place, and then there would be no follow-through. And those, you know, there would not be operations and maintenance support or otherwise sort of continuing support. And, and I think there's been some, the right word would be, communities have felt sort of that they've been, you know, they've, they've had all this tension and support that comes, this comes through, and then there's not, there's not a follow-through behind that. So with this program, we're trying to change that a little bit and really focus on thinking, helping, working with communities, not just, you know, offering solutions, but really working through, through the, through goals, through community goals, and then through sort of detailed discussions about really what what a community needs and thinking about how, how we can help communities. Of course, we're still ultimately supporting sort of project deployment and technology deployment, but really the idea is to create a more sort of sustainable and long-term, long-term long-term support, long-term, long-term outcomes. So for the, for the program itself, there was an application process. I don't remember the number, Adrian, it was something around 42 committees or so that applied. And of those, we, we've selected 14, and Adrian will share those in the next slide. 14 and Rogue, Rogue, Rogue and Talent, Oregon were one of those that were selected. And they're in the, now the technical assistance phase. So as part of technical assistance, the, the components that are, we offer are problem identification, partnership development with, with, between us and, and global community, but then also connections to, to other, other researchers at the lab, other labs, other sort of private industry, data discovery, identification, and finally workforce, workforce assessment. And Adrian's going to get a bit into sort of the more equity and workforce tasks in, in her, in her discussion. From technical assistance, and this is the Sandia component that Maeve was referring to, the project will, for of the 14 projects, some will be selected to go into a project development and demonstration phase funded through this program. That's not to say that the other projects that are not necessarily, are not selected would not otherwise go through a development demonstration phase, but for this specific program, the money is limited for, for a subset of projects. But of course, we intend to find additional financial opportunities, grants, and otherwise to support all of the projects going forward. And then finally, finally deployment, of course. The outcomes of, of, of this program are intended to connect with disadvantaged communities, particularly with energy solutions to support equitable outcomes for the communities themselves. Demonstrate the role of energy storage and energy equity. Again, this program is funded through the energy storage program, so the energy storage component is a critical component. Develop methods and metrics to analyze impact of energy storage investment and other technology investment on equity. And we're hoping through this work, this will be sort of a longstanding, we can establish sort of metrics moving forward that helps DOE generally and the industry, or energy industry more broadly, really think about equitable outcomes and, and energy deployment. Of course, report on lessons learned and best practices, and then grow and continue to continue to progress in sort of this vein of work and strengthen DOE's connection and engagement with communities and in future projects.
Thanks, Drew. Um, so we like to kind of share, you know, this, this first cohort that Rogue and Talent, Oregon are a part of. So as Maeve and Drew have mentioned, you know, this was a competitive application process. Yeah, I don't remember exactly how many we had, Drew. If I was going to say 60 applications, maybe we had 60 initially, and it was kind of pared down to 40-some that were scored by a review panel, and ultimately the 14 committees were selected. They're located across the continental United States. We have one located in Hawaii. I think seven of these are either tribal governments or representatives for tribes. Great diversity, geographically diversity of goals and energy system challenges. And the, the fantastic thing about that is that we're able to take some ideas from certain communities and share those with others that may benefit. You know, Rogue particularly is focused on resilience, and we have a number of other communities who are also focused on resilience. We're able to kind of share some ideas between those communities and come up with some, some really neat things that I don't think we otherwise would have thought of. So again, just a fantastic group that we're working with, and we're just thrilled to be a part of it. So I'll share a little bit more about the equity and workforce component. Obviously, equity is a big part of this program. It's included in the name Energy Storage for Social Equity. So each community gets an equity and workforce assessment in addition to this, this technical system design. So sort of the way we're approaching this is we are centering the community as experts, you know, really in, in your lived experience. And so we are listening first. We are learning from you guys, hearing what your challenges are, what your goals are, what your vision is for your energy future. And we're, we're trying to guide the storage project and design to maximize the impact. We are, a key piece of this is linking this program intervention to results, ensuring that, that the intended benefits are flowing to the recipients that, that we envisioned they would flow to. Oftentimes, in these types of interventions, programs will say, you know, yes, by, by building a storage project or, or by conducting this intervention, we are achieving the equitable outcome just because we did it. Well, we're trying to back that up with data. You know, it's not always the case that when something is deployed, that the benefits are recognized. You know, sometimes they're not. Sometimes they exceed expectations. And, you know, if we can really track this with data, with listening to community members, this is something that we can learn from. If the outcomes, if the intended outcomes were achieved, we can try to replicate that and build on that. If they were not achieved, you know, we can look at where we might be able to improve on that for the future. Again, building capacity within the community, Drew have mentioned making this sort of a longer-term project. We, you know, PNNL is only going to be involved in this for the duration of the technical assistance program. We want to make sure that the community has capacity for operations and maintenance. That includes potentially some, some community capacity for equity work. And so we're looking where we can partner to, to build skills for amplified and sustained benefit. This is a big piece of, of where the workforce analysis is coming in. And then finally, like I, I mentioned on the last slide, we're sharing creative solutions across communities. This is, I think, one of the more exciting pieces. So communities with similar challenges and suggesting other opportunities that may not have been previously considered. This is a real benefit from having this sort of cohort group. So the way we're going about this equity and workforce work is we're, we're taking this in kind of three phases. The first is discovery. So we're looking to Rogue and the talent community to identify the challenges that you're having with your existing energy system. We've had some in-depth discussions with Rogue Climate and, and we're working on a mapping canvas to, to document those challenges and then move that forward in the program. This will feed into a baseline study where we're looking at some existing energy justice or environmental justice and energy equity tools that exist. There are quite a few out there. DOE recently released one, so we're taking a look at those and publicly available data and using that to help identify some metrics and key indicators that will, will measure progress towards community goals. The planning phase is community engagement and setting goals, estimating how storage might have an impact, and then building capacity through the workforce piece. You know, again, this, this is building on the discovery phase, really listening to communities, still listening to members, listening to what Rogue Climate is telling us, and, and trying to figure out how do we plan the storage project to maximize those benefits. And then finally, the accountability phase. We, we want to make sure that the benefits that we're intending to deliver, to deliver to the underserved and overburdened community members are actually delivered. And so we are taking the accountability piece very seriously. This also gives us an opportunity to provide feedback to DOE and, and improve our program for future cohorts, building on, on what worked well and learning from what did not work as well. And then preparing the talent community for a post-deployment outcomes assessment. Okay, and then Drew is going to talk a little bit more about the technical side.
Thanks, Adrian. So diving a little bit into the, the sites we've been considering, and this is of course through, through consultation with, with Rogue and Jordan and the city. The two, the two locations we've identified are Public Works and the Talent Elementary and Talent Middle Schools with the priority on the, the Public Works site. What we're thinking on both sites are What we're thinking on both sites are energy storage and PV systems. For Public Works, the benefits would be energy cost savings and clean energy, and then reliability and resiliency of operations. For Talent Elementary School, energy cost savings again and clean energy for them as well. But also resiliency and a potential component of the school serving as emergency shelters in case of extreme events. And then finally, educational opportunities for students. So we've talked to both both Public Works and the Talent Phoenix School District and had initial conversations to sort of start scoping out what a potential project that might work and that would fit their needs would look like. So in the next slide, I'll share I'll share something that we looked at for Public Works and still scoping and doing some analyses for the middle and elementary school. So one note on the middle elementary school, the the school district did put in a solar solar system, I think by two fifty, two forty eight kilowatts at the high school. And they've they're they seem to be pretty pleased with that setup. And so the the potential for these two sites is is also there. I think twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, each of them are gonna get seismic upgrades for the building facilities and the roofs. So that could be a ripe opportunity potentially to think about, you know, upgrades for PV installations if necessary. Next slide. So I just wanted to mention that we're still in sort of a high fa- hi, or I shouldn't say hi, relatively early stage sort of analysis. So none of this is we're presenting some potential locations for PV, but none of this is decided and is certainly subject to to feedback and and of course, requirements from Public Works. But just just to get something on paper and to start sort of doing the the analysis, we've identified identified a couple areas where PV systems could could be placed and and did a rough estimate on the amount of energy available from each PV system, PV being full to footable take. Thanks, May. Get caught in 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 our work and an acronym, heaven or hell, however, however you have it. So the the yellow outlines on the right are the potential PV or solar solar siding and the capacity that they would provide. And then Brett at at Public Works identified the water main in blue, so we definitely want to avoid that. And then a power line, underground power in the in the purple, which which I don't think is is as much of an issue. So total available site capacity there is about 1.8 megawatts, so 1,800 kilowatts. And the the setup would consider of a PV system and an energy storage system. Operations, we would think would be primarily utility connected for for normal operations. The PV and ES being energy storage system would provide for cost reductions, you know, leveraging the solar, the great solar that is in talent and is available in talent. The great solar potential to bring down, to increase sort of to increase the amount of clean energy being used and reduce costs. And in particular, demand charges when pumps might be operating, you know, at high, high demand charge and high demand charge periods. In situations, emergency situations where the utility might be unavailable, the system could provide some power before before the depending on the situation, whether the pumps need to be run or not, could provide power before the emergency generator would kick in. I think there was discussions about a potential emergency operation center and could provide provide energy for that purpose. We've also talked talked about the site being a potential location for city city EV fleet charging in the future. And it could also be a mobile battery charging location if if that we were to to go down that route of mobile batteries where you could you could charge a battery and potentially deploy it to different sites for emergency purposes. So I think we just wanted to share some high level thoughts about what we're doing or what we're how we're approaching it. And I think with once we get, you know, once we define both for for public works and for the schools, we could get a bit more definition and more detail. I think we're at we're intending to come back and and share some more more specifics with you.
Awesome. Thank you, Drew. So now we just kind of want to open up to questions. So I think we can probably go back to either the slide about public works or, yeah, let's go back to the slide about public works. Just so people can maybe digest this information a little bit more. And we can open it up to questions and have a conversation about any thoughts or concerns that are coming up for folks.
Counselor Byers?
Hi, thank you. I'm just wanting to make sure I'm understanding all of this. Essentially, this is a presentation about a collection of solar panels and a storage system and delivery system. Yes? Like, in a nutshell?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just, you are so right. The technical jargon, I wanted to make sure I wasn't overthinking it. Thank you.
It's like learning another language. Yep, understand.
Counselor Clark?
So is this, um, are you looking at an either or between the schools and this site or both and scenario?
I think probably all three, either or or both. And try to and and we'll do some sort of technical analysis and economic analysis to see what what makes sense.
And, yeah, so what's what what would be the the factors that would influence that? Both on the, you know, technical side and the community side?
On the technical side, probably the ability to install a PV or sorry, solar and storage system in terms of sort of roof capacity or stability to support it. And sure, the electrical use of of either building to see what would sort of make what would economically make sense. But but otherwise, I think at a high level, the 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 store, the solar resource is quite quite great in in talent. And so you know, with economics sort of not being in picture, it would probably, I mean, even with economics, it might make sense to have a system at both locations. And then on the community side, of course, we would, we would want to think about, you know, which site might be better suited for for a for an emergency sort of shelter facility or or otherwise or both and kind of what the capacity needs would be in in for either one. And presumably, the town, you know, the middle school is quite a bit larger, and so that would might be the the better option there. But but we're trying to intended to dive into sort of that analysis.
I just want to add on to what Drew said. So there there is a big like use difference between the public works and the schools. So public works, you know, there have been some things thrown around about it being used kind of as like a emergency operation center in the case of another big disruption like the Almeida fire. So if we were to create a project dedicated to this, and this was our focus, it would be more towards supporting the city's efforts on resilience. Whereas if we focus on the schools instead, it's more about the community resilience, because we would be able to support those eventually being resilience hubs, which are like community centered and public facing resources for the community. So it's it's really, we're gonna be able to do an analysis on both and really determine like which one. And then when it gets to the funding stage, which is like will happen after December, after this program is kind of concluded, we can kind of decide which one is the priority of the community and the priority of talent that we really want to prioritize in the next round of funding and things like that. But we will then have all these like designs to then work off of in the future.
To that point, Maeve, I think I think we intend to do several scenarios of the different sort of different permutations and and then and then present them to you all. And then then you can take it from there in terms of what what makes sense, you know, from a from community economic technical perspectives.
Totally. Counselor Byers?
Thank you. So I'm curious if you could share some examples. I I know that this is so dependent on each unique community, but some examples of project implementation that make this project have enhanced social equity as compared to other projects that might be similar in planning.
Do you want like examples of what other communities are doing that are part of?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So it's it's honestly been an amazing cohort to like learn from. We have community meetings every Fridays, basically, where you can go. It's optional, and people kind of talk about their communities and share different energy challenges that they're facing. So there are a lot of native based like tribal organizations, like the one last week is Native Renewables in Arizona, and they're trying to work on doing residential solar for communities and I think the Navajo Nation in Arizona, but I might be incorrect. But they haven't like an amazing website and they're amazing organization, and they're working on workforce development because they have amazing solar potential in their community. So they're really working to capitalize on that and bring that solar energy industry to their nation. Another one that comes to mind is Together New Orleans, which is an amazing organization in New Orleans. And their whole purpose is they have this grand goal of having eighty-four locations throughout New Orleans, basically dedicated towards community resilience, according at the Lighthouse Project. And what they do is each one is kind of different in forms by community needs and does things like maybe have a community kitchen, maybe have solar plus storage. And like the whole idea is they want to have each they want to have one of these buildings within one mile of every resident of New Orleans. So there, that's like their whole equity lens and their whole purpose with that. With our project here, we're a little bit more complicated because we are a really rural area. So that's where like wanting to create something that people can either come to or the potential to like charge mobile batteries at this location and then deploy them becomes an attractive opportunity for us as well. That might have been a very long winded way to answer your question, but I hope that gave a little bit of clarity.
Counselor Patiso?
Yeah. Hi, I just have a couple of basic questions. Whenever I hear about solar projects like this, I always wonder, and I may have missed something in your presentation. What's the long term sustainability of the this the solar and batteries? Because the eventually the solar solar runs down, the batteries get old. Is there part of the plan is how to continue funding this? Or is that just then left up to the city once it's installed?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the the solar panels probably last twenty to twenty-five years, I think. From my longevity perspective, the battery system is about ten to fifteen years.
Just long enough for everyone to get really used to them.
Right.
Forget where they came from.
Yeah, but but based, I mean, based on the analysis that we would do, we would evaluate sort of that we would consider, you know, the longer term beyond beyond that that fifteen year period or twenty-five year period and includes sort of the the refresh or refurbishing costs. So for the battery system, you could probably refurbish the cells. For the panels, you probably have to replace them. So the costs aren't the same as, you know, when you initially bought them, they would be they would be lower, but we would factor that into the economic analysis. So it wouldn't be as if a cost is, you know, kind of looming out there. It would be considered before before anything gets 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 selected, if that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And a second question. You talked about in the beginning, you're gonna be doing some discovery and things like that. And I'm wondering, is that information gonna be available to the city when you're finished, including any spatial data that may be collected? Or developed?
Yeah. Absolutely. All of our reports will be provided to Rogue, and then they can decide to share those with the city. And we can, we can work with Rogue and the city council if there's a desire to produce reports that will be in the in the preferred format. So if you prefer, you know, GIS data layers, if you prefer a dashboard or a written report, we can accommodate those requests.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Panamriff? And then, let's see, Counsel Patiso, is that it for your questions? Did you have another one? Okay, Counsel Panamriff?
No, I just thought my hand was still up, but it was down, and then I put it up and.
Yeah. Thank you. You know, I I love this project in that it that it accomplishes, it it's working towards two, you know, really important goals to to our community resilience as well as renewable energy. And and I think we've talked a lot about, you know, the the examples of how it could be helpful for resilience are are exciting. I'm wondering if we could go back to the the public work slide. And just to get an idea, I'm very bad when it comes to understanding quantity, especially with energy. So if we were talking about the this 1.8 megawatts or whatever, I'm wondering if we can, can we understand that in terms of like the number of of households, families that could help or even ideally as a percentage of the city of talent in terms of of energy use?
Sure. So maybe an average residential home has a an average use of one kilowatt. I'm sorry, no, one hundred kilowatts. So that would be, well, no, actually, one second. Let me think about it a second.
This is where a spreadsheet comes in really handy.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't mean to make you do math.
No, no, it's okay. It's quite all right. It's good. I should be doing math on this. Actually, I guess it does. It does widely depend. So maybe an apartment may be one kilowatt, a house will be a couple, actually. Yeah, so so say in a typical residential, typical residential installation, maybe between five and ten kilowatts. So if you look at it from that perspective, say, let's say, let's assume ten. So then you're thinking about about one hundred and eighty, one hundred and eighty households from a 1.8 megawatt system or 1,800 kilowatt system.
Sorry, you said one hundred and eighty?
Hundred and eighty.
Yeah, so if we were like snap our fingers and this were to appear and it were to be hooked up to the grid, it would supply energy for one hundred and eighty households.
It would supply partially, partially supply energy for one hundred and eighty households. There's still have to be grid connected for when the sun's unavailable, but yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
But that is where the, yeah, no problem.
The storage kind of works in.
Yeah, so if you if you think about relying on the storage, then maybe it's not quite one hundred and eighty households. I'd have to do the numbers, but maybe a subset of that you could you could fully supply with solar and and storage.
Because the the battery would kick in, so the battery would be storing, and then at night it would be delivering electricity. Is that right?
That's that's exactly right. Yeah.
So so even when we're not in an emergency situation, this setup could could reliably provide renewable energy to a lot of folks.
That's correct. It would provide renewable energy and offset utility costs, even non in a non emergency situation.
Wonderful, thanks.
Yeah. For one note, though, counselor, for this specific analysis for Public Works, I think we're just thinking of supplying the public works facility rather than nearby households.
And yeah, and that's really important because that's a that takes a lot of energy to do the the water pumps, I think we're talking about, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So that helps achieve the city goals of being totally renewable. Great, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Clark?
What's the, what's the timeline on the project? Both both, you know, the timeline for project development and then looking out towards implementation?
So we have access to the technical assistance until December of this year. And then ideally, after the technical system concludes, that's when we'd be pursuing funding opportunities for this project. And then ideally, start as soon as start developing as soon as we get the funding secured.
Great. Another question, Counsel Clark?
Yeah, so just, I mean, it looks like it looks like this design is putting solar panels on all of the vacant space on the property and a couple of the roofs of the buildings. Is that? Am I reading that right?
Yes.
All right.
Subject to because we just kind of did this before sort of really diving into sort of an engagement with the the public works team, subject to their feedback and and what what you know, what practically works for them in terms of their operations. Yeah.
Are there any other comments or questions? Well, terrific. Thank you so much for this great presentation. It's pretty exciting to find us. Well, terrific. Thank you so much for this great presentation. It's pretty exciting to find us taking another step towards some of the city goals while partnering with your organization to do some really great work. Jordan, I'm going to hand it back to you. If you have any final comments and then we'll adjourn.
Thank you. Maeve, was anything more from your team that your team needs to walk away from this meeting? Or are you all good? Um, not really. I mean, it was lovely to hear like the initial questions and let you guys know what our thoughts were so far. I guess if there are any like standing concerns about this project or any standing questions. I think Nicole and Eleanor will probably be the people to reach out to because they have Drew's information and Adrian's information. And we meet every other week to talk about this. I'll unfortunately be out for August. But so, yeah, if there's any other standing questions or concerns that come up, feel free to reach out to our team and we'd be happy to talk more about this and incorporate any other questions or concerns into our thinking about this process. Because obviously the whole purpose of this is to create something sustainable, long lasting, that's going to serve talent for a long time. Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Maeve. Mayor Council, thank you for your time, mayor. That's all I have for this study session. And so there's a few more times to get some dinner in before 6:45.
Great. And so do you, should we just leave the, I mean, do you want to just stay on the Zoom or what, what does the council want to do? Exit the Zoom and come back? We have a lot of audience members. I just feel like maybe leaving the Zoom open and letting them know that the meeting starts at about 15 minutes or so, a little over 15 minutes. How, what works best for staff?
Staff will stay on. So we will, you will keep manning the meeting. So I will leave it up to individual counselors if they'd like to fully sign off or just go video off.
Great. That sounds like a great middle of the road solution. Okay. All right, everybody. Well, thanks again for the great presentation. We'll see you pretty soon. This study session is adjourned at 6:27. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hector, do you have the ability to put up a, a message to the folks in the audience that will be returning at 6:45?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Thank you.